Good evening, welcome to the March 24th, 2016 meeting of the Village of Rhinebeck Board of Trustees. The primary purpose of our meeting this evening is a budget workshop. But before we get to that, we have a couple other items to consider. The first is a scheduled public comment session on the, our plan for maintenance at the water reservoir located in Hiley Road. So, um, do you want to give us an update Gary, or where we're, where we're at on that? And what the proposal that we're considering is?
Okay, um, so as we discussed last time, one of the things we're liking to do is continue the maintenance of the reservoir up at the Hiley, up on Hiley Road. Uh, we did a trial experiment last year with bringing goats in to bring that down to a level where it was maintainable. And then this year, we went in and clean, and were able to clean it up. Because of what the goats did, we were able to get in there, do a good cleanup, and take trees down, remove branches, and trim the place, trim the place up. So right now, the place is really looking pretty good. There's some additional work that needs to be done in terms of slime replacement. But overall, um, we're in a position where now we can maintain the facility, you know, with either goats, you know, or other, whatever means we need to do. Uh, goats is still a viable alternative to doing up there. It's a cheap alternative for us to pursue, uh, to be able to do that maintenance on the Hiley Road reservoir.
Okay, do we have the, the let's go there? Court's located across the, uh, across the street from town hall tonight.
Nobody's on.
Okay.
Did either one of you want to address the board? Mr. Garrido, did you want to?
Oh, we'll see how it goes.
Same, same rules as always. Frank, three minutes, comments directed to the, to the board. Um, not much of an audience to direct them at otherwise, but.
The only thing, okay, thank you. I, I question why we only get three minutes. I honestly do, 'cause, um, you know, everyone else I've heard here so far, I mean, even the guy with the sign, he was up here 20 minutes. And no one in the last six months of any meeting that I've been at has been asked to just do three minutes other than Ike and I. I don't know, I just find that discriminatory and prejudicial to us. I, I really thought we were gonna be able to talk. Um, wow, that's disappointing to me. Um, I'm gonna ask you to please have more than three minutes if I may.
You used some of it already.
May I have more than three minutes?
Yeah, it doesn't work like that either, but please, you know.
And I would ask, why are we the only ones who are only allowed three minutes?
Frank, the rules are consistent across all the meetings for public comment.
I think that if you look at the prior videos, for the last six months, you would find that no one other than Ike and I have been asked, no one other than Ike and I have been asked to limit our comments for three minutes. I've been through the wall. So I would ask that you please give me the same respect that you've given everyone else, that's all. I mean, it's kinda hard, it's.
Do you want five minutes Frank?
I would love.
Do you have, do you have comments on Hiley, the reservoir? Cause that's, that's what the, this is, that's what you're invited here for tonight.
I'm gonna ask God to help me through this, is what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna ask him to help me through this, 'cause I really need help here. Well, dear Village of Rhinebeck, may this finding be in the best of spirits and health. Last year, Gary Bassett introduced the idea of bringing green goats into our Village of Rhinebeck water reservoir area. This water reservoir is our primary source for drinking water for Village of Rhinebeck, as well as some of the town Rhinebeck families. The purpose of using these farm animals as goats was to manicure this area which is encompassed by a fence. According to Mr. Bassett, Mr. Bassett's statement in the Daily Freeman, goats will clean up everything. They will clean up all the brush around the fence. I'd ask, is this really true? From the photos that the village received from me, do those photos show that the goats will clean up everything? Do these photos also show that they will clean up all the brush around the fence, as Gary stated? Those photos I submitted to you certainly do not show that. My photos show the exact opposite, that not everything, especially not the brush, has been cleaned up. For well over 20 years, the Village of Rhinebeck has been maintaining this property by mowing that area twice a year. This has cost the village $400 twice a year. The property has always looked well manicured, to my knowledge. No one on Hiley Road has ever complained to the village. Do you know of any such complaints from any of us? Last year, Mr. Barrett Bassett lobbied to get the use of approximately 30 goats that were brought in to maintain this property. The village purchased a tent for $400 specifically for this experiment at the cost for the use of these goats then. And the cost of these, the use for these goats then was $800 during this trial period. The goats essentially cost the taxpayers $1,200. Instead of the normal $400 it would've cost had this area simply been mowed as it had been for the previous decades. Recently, the Village of Rhinebeck has put forth a motion to add to an existing local law. "In the Village of Rhinebeck, except for farmlots, except farmlots, for every one acre of open pasture land, there shall be not more than one horse, cow, hog, beef, cattle, sheep, goat, or other four-legged domestic-type animal or combination thereof. Any manure storage shall be maintained not less than 50 feet from any adjoining property line. On any non-farm lot, the keeping of chickens, ducks, geese, or other fowl shall not, shall be prohibited." If the village believes that this law is a necessity, a necessary step to protect the families in the Village of Rhinebeck, then why would the Village of Rhinebeck want to impose on the families of Hiley Road 20 some goats on an area adjacent to those families? How in good conscience would the Village of Rhinebeck be able to enforce their own laws upon violators of the village trustee, upon violators if the village trustees themselves would not adhere by the same laws that are already in effect for the town of Rhinebeck? My industry recognizes me as a security subject matter expert. I engage with federal, state, and local law officials, work with municipalities and local governments, as well as national transit authorities, and deal with critical infrastructure. My expertise assists with the identification of risks and how to mitigate those risks. These are identified as what's known as an ATDRA, an asset threat vulnerability and risk assessment.
Frank, you're over six minutes. We've extended double the courtesy to you.
Well, I'm gonna ask you to extend me another five, please.
I don't think we're gonna do another five Frank, we've done double what is allotted.
Well then, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I am gonna let the public know that I'm the only person other than Ike in the last six months who has been asked to step away. They allowed someone with a banner to stand up here at the last meeting for over 20 minutes to talk about putting a banner on.
Frank, your past, what, 6:45, so I think, thank you, you can submit the remainder of your comments in writing.
I'm gonna finish this, thank you.
Frank, you've been asked.
I know I've been asked, I'm gonna put it on record, I want it on record.
Frank, you can put it on record. We're gonna, you've been whining now twice Frank.
You know what Gary, you're being prejudic, you're being prejudicial, you're discriminating against me right now. You're discriminating against me and you're, you're violating my rights as a citizen because you haven't done this to anyone else.
Frank, we have consistent rules that have been applied across.
No, they haven't Gary, I've been at these meetings for the last six months, you cannot make statements like that.
You know I'm not Gary.
He, you can't make statements like that when they're not true. You haven't done that. There was an elderly lady here two week, a month ago, who stood up here for 10 to 15 minutes about the trees Gary. You not once asked her to leave, public comment.
Frank, your time, your time is past Frank, you're done.
This is terrible, this is awful Gary, I mean Heath, this is terrible. This is so wrong. This is so wrong sir.
We're gonna ask you politely one last time to.
And then what's gonna happen?
We have a police officer here who will help you, uh, yield the microphone.
Is that the phone?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
So I think I, I think, I think maybe the right thing to do is be arrested. Because, um, you're, you're violating my civil liberties and I'm happy to be arrested for that. For my freedoms that I gave to my country, I'm happy to be arrested for that. If that's, if that's what you'd like to do, then I'm happy and.
Frank, we're not talking about arrests, we're talking about common courtesy. You've had your turn to speak, multiple meetings you've studied.
This is wrong, this is public comment.
Officer Pelham, would you please?
This is, would you like to arrest me?
Would you like him to leave now?
Yes, please.
All right, I'm gonna grab my, uh, book. Wow.
Mr. Garrido.
Know what you sell. Oh, I want to, oh, can you please give this, I want that on public record.
Mr. Garrido, to Hiley Road Rhinebeck, we are 26 years resident of the town. Higher than the person who, who submitted two proposals to the town.
And I should get arrested.
One admonishing the board, the village board, for what they were trying to do to the.
Now I gotta sue them.
Properties, the two parcel properties that they had to use for goats. It was signed by everybody on Hiley Road except one family. I also submitted another proposal, um, to, to, um, define and, and reject the idea of this municipal jurisdiction. Uh, again, signed by, um, the, the 13 families on Hiley Road. Uh, that's a complete 100% signing against the village board and what they want to do. You are a lab owner, you're not a municipal, your municipality ends, um, on the boundary of the village. I talked to, um, the Secretary of State, the, excuse me, the New York State, um, Department of, uh, Department of State. And she said unless there is an IMA between the town and the village, the, the village is only restricted to, to the geographic property that they have. And she's willing to, she, or the Assistant Director, Executive Director was willing to look. I highly accuse the board of being, of, of doing a backroom, backroom deal. And I gave her a copy of the video that all of you did, uh, talking about the goodness of the using the goats. And, uh, quote, "A cooperation of the, um, the neighbors on Hiley Road." I'd like to know what neighbor, um, gave you permission or gave you, uh, gave you support. That never happened, and you know. I've also contacted all the other, uh, adjacent, uh, adjacent property owners on Burger Road that, that, that is adjacent to your two parcels. That I was not able to get their signatures, uh, yet in the mail. And as soon as they come forward, I will forward that, uh, to the village as well. So, so my point is, we don't have representation on the board, on, on the village board. We don't get the vote on, 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 uh, the makeup of the board. I had to go through the town to get to you. And I will continue to do that, um, if you continue to persist on doing that. I am in the, in the process of submitting four, uh, violations to the town ordinances against the village board. I will also, I intend to file 20, um, court cases at the small claims court, um, to, to, um, to adjudicate this, this issue of maintenance of the property. And I will also challenge the, the village or the, the water department's construction of that, that tower. That's what I want to do, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody got any comments on the goats?
Your Freeman?
I just know that I've seen Mr. Garrido speak many times and he has lots of misinformation. Um, I've not yet seen him provide backup to a lot of the stuff that you, uh, you talk about. Uh, I saw you at the town meeting, I've seen you at these meetings, and you talk about lots of things. And I've not yet seen you back up any of the, any of the statements that you made with documentation. I want to make sure that that's on the record. Um, you talked about, no, 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 let me speak, you have your three, you have your three minutes. You talked about us, uh, doing sludge, you wanna pay attention to me?
No.
In the town meeting, you mentioned us locating a cell tower up on top of the, uh, reservoir. I don't know where you got that information from. You, you and Frank have been in these meetings apparently for six months, we've never spoken, there's no, there is no proposal.
This happened in 1992.
But since, in the last six months?
I didn't say it was six.
Yes you did. And you also said sludge hole, you said replant construction. The, the meeting, we were, Gary and I both sat in the meeting last Monday, where you speculated about different things that were going on at that site, and none of it was true. So a lot of the stuff that you, you talk about isn't, I, we've not seen documentation to back it up. So I just want to make everyone aware of that. You talk about people in Italy, Saudi Arabia, you spoke to, you spoke to, past owners, the subdivision, the person who subdivided the land, the developer. I don't know where you're getting this information, we've not seen.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Can you tell me the, the origin of the, the road name, Hiley Road?
Does that matter?
Yes.
How does that matter?
Because your, your deed specifically mentions Hiley Road, and your contention is that you have, you have pre-disposition or you.
It could be called any road.
But it's specifically says Hiley Road.
But you've speculated at every meeting that I've been to about different things that none of them have been true.
I'll file it, I'll file it with the, with the small claims court, we can do this in that way, letter card.
I'm just saying, the, the information that you provided over the last couple of meetings, I've not seen any factual documentation.
I'm sure you can pay Richard, uh, a, a, a repayment fee instead of a per hour fee.
Just one more question, yeah, so when you spoke to the town, what was the town's response to the IMA?
They have, they, they said that we don't, their lawyers said that they don't need one.
We don't need an IMA, that's correct, right? What was the town's response to their support of using an alternative method of the good light the goats up on Hiley Road at the reservoir?
They said they don't have any restrictions associated with, with, with the use of temporary goats.
Correct.
But it, but it doesn't say that in their virus, it's, it's very black and white, it's not temporary.
So we are in agreement that the town is supportive of this proposition to go forward to you.
That's the correspondence that we've received, that the town is support, in support of the plan. Um, in terms of it not being a municipality, I believe that's an inaccurate statement. There are municipal properties owned in other municipalities, such as the town hall across the street. That's an exempt property within the village. The village water plant is an exempt property located in the town. The Hiley Road reservoir, an exempt property located within the town. I'm sure this happens all over, um, all over the state. We have indeed had, uh, support from the neighbors. The Hagerty family submitted a letter to the board, which was read, uh, partially here, uh, at the meeting. And, uh, there have been other voices of support for the plan. Um, in terms of the town, we have been in communication with the town on a regular basis. We have put this out here at these meetings in the past. Uh, they're, they're very familiar with your complaint that had been filed with the zoning department, the building department, the town super project. Maybe you called, you didn't file it, you've been, you've had communication with them. And I've been advised every time that they've told you the same thing that we're telling you. You're operating 100% within, uh, the law. The, uh, the zoning restrictions for that development do not apply to the municipal, municipally-owned property. And we're doing everything we can to clean up that property to make it, um, to make it a nicer neighbor. So, that's our, our position as it stands. So one other thing is, uh, Mr. Sammarino continues to mention 30 goats, there's never been a plan for 30 goats?
Your video, her video has you saying 35 goats.
There was never been a plan to have, on any regular basis, 35 goats there. There was more than 20 at one time for a partial period of time during the fall, as they were moved in and out. But the average number of goats up there at that time was between 20 and 25 goats at any one time.
So the video that, that Heath and you did on November, on November 5th, 2015, that specifically said 35 goats, that, that, Mr.?
There was, there, there was at one time in excess of 25 goats there for a few days, only because they were being transported from place to place. It was not a permanent establishment of any of that number. And even in our proposal going forward, which I mentioned at the town meeting, if we go forward with this, the plan was to use, again, approximately, approximately 20 goats to do a cleanup and then only have three to four goats remaining there for the duration of the summer. So there's not going to be livestock or herd or whatever goats are called, I'm not sure, of goats there for an extended period of time, and they are only there for a temporary basis, as we've, as we've, you've acknowledged and we've acknowledged, that there is a temporary use for maintenance.
No, that's your intent, temporary is your words.
Correct, well you used the words here too.
I never said that. We can go to the videotape, I swear I will say. Um, let me ask a question. When were you going to tell us about the dead goat that was found decaying on the property?
That is the owners of the goat's responsibility. It was, it was there, we found it, we found it shortly after it had passed away. The owners of the goat said it was a very, very old goat and it died of natural causes.
Okay.
There was no reason to announce anything about it or do anything, it was their property, it was up to them.
Did you, did you inform the health department that that happened? I mean, you are a municipal water supplier.
But he wasn't in the reservoir.
No, but why was, was there a need to do that? Where was there, why is there a need to do that?
If it's decaying property, it's the same thing.
The goats don't go into the storage area where the water is. How long was it there, a day?
Less than a day.
It was there for less than a day, so it wasn't decaying.
And the Department of Health was contacted, and approval to place goats on the property was, was secured from the Department of Health. So there's no problem there either.
That call was made. So your, your facts are still off that, you know, and I would like, we asked at the last public hearing meeting we had this. We would come and we would talk to anybody, if you have an alternative plan, present your alternative plan so that we can evaluate it. We have not received any alternative plan except for rejection of this proposal.
When did you ask this?
The, the last, the last meeting we had on, I forget the date, when we had the goats, when everybody was here. When you and Frank were here discussing it the last time.
I don't recall, I, I'll go back to the videotape, but I don't recall you asking for alternative.
And we also asked to meet with your planning committee, which you said you had, which had never been met. And that was, that hasn't occurred either. We have, we have called, we have sent letters, we are doing everything we can to be good stewards of the property while we're up there, maintaining it.
I only got, had two letters inviting us to this meeting today.
The last time you got a call though, correct?
I got a call with her when she was telling me the day before that the goats were being delivered. That's it, that's the only communication that we had. You've never asked, invited us to participate in a discussion.
That's what we're doing right now.
Right now.
This is a public, public forum, right?
Exactly.
You do, you do your own deals in the, in the back room, in the back room. You make this whole decision.
All of our business is conducted here in public. And we specifically set this, this information session, this comment session, to give you the opportunity to come here and provide us with your comments.
And you cut videotape, you cut the videotape prior to, or right after the, the goats were put there the first time. And you did not invite anybody.
That is absolutely inaccurate, absolutely. All of our public meetings are on that videotape and posted online.
I'm talking about your, your videotape on, your, your, your clip on Facebook.
Clip on Facebook?
Yeah, you do have a clip on Facebook, which I'm editing to, to create a collage of all these meetings for the court case.
As far as I know, the village does not have a Facebook page.
Right, so you're referring to what Panda published, I think, for?
There's a Panda videotape, there's also a Facebook, you know what a Facebook is, right?
Yeah.
The village doesn't have a Facebook page, so we did not publish anything to Facebook. If it's, once it's on Panda, it becomes, uh, it's public domain, and anyone can see it.
Okay.
I have a kind of a question.
Yeah, sure.
So, I'm well aware after all of this of where you live, and so it looks like a little bit to the east of you are 60 sheep. They don't bother you at all?
They do, but I can't do anything about them, they're.
Aren't they closer, they're actually closer to you than?
No.
I think they are, I actually wheeled it off, they're closer to the, to you than, than the reservoir is.
Okay.
I'm just saying, I just, I find it, I, I pass by there every day.
That's, that is a farm, are you a farm?
Am I a farm?
Yeah.
Me personally?
Is the parcel's a farm?
No, it's not a farm, but it's a pasture of sorts, yeah.
Okay. I don't think we're going anywhere.
Oh no.
Yeah, so, just a couple more, um, comments. I know Frank mentioned our, our village law, um, which has, is just a proposal at this point. It's, it's an amendment which actually, uh, gives, it's a clarification. It doesn't reduce the, um, number of animals that are allowed. His comments about the three-minute rule, three-minute rule has, uh, was put out, I don't have the date. You can go to the videotape, I'm sure we can confirm it, but that's been consistently applied. Well, we do invite, um, certain projects here, which you referred to, the Solarize project. That was, that was not during public comment session, that was an agenda item where that program was invited to present to the board. So that is certainly a different, uh, a different scenario than the public comment session, so. And we have afforded to Frank in great excess of three minutes every time he's chosen to speak, as we have done with you. And when we have the ability, we have extended, uh, the time in almost every case, so. Anything?
I just one more comment, are you pleased with the progress that we've made on cleaning up the reservoir?
Yes.
Thank you.
Did you paint the?
Thank you.
Did you paint the, uh, reservoir? Because it's got a lot of algae on it, and did you replant the trees? The one hundred trees that, that the developer put in?
I asked you a specific question, is, are you pleased with the progress we've made so far on cleaning up the reservoir?
You cannot, you cannot expect.
And your response was yes, that you are pleased with the progress.
If you ask a question, make sure you know the answer. Your, your lawyer will tell you to, to do that. You're not a judge, you cannot silence me, um, and I just gave you more information than you needed.
I know in this, uh, since last summer, in, in talking to Gary, we, we had, uh, you know, identified a priority of cleaning up, uh, the reservoir in order to be a better neighbor to the people on Hiley. And I know that, um, how long you been on the board, Howie?
Seven years.
Howie's been on the board seven years. How, how many times have you heard from Mr. Garrido or a neighbor about the, uh, the condition of the reservoir?
Never in seven years.
In my three years, I've never seen you until the goats came, so there's never been a complaint filed. We independently took it upon ourselves to clean up that reservoir. We independently took it upon ourselves to clean up that reservoir to be a better neighbor to you and the other residents of Hiley Road. We're making every effort to, to make that look like a, a cleaned-up site. You know, we're having repairs made to the fence. We've had all the weeds cut down. We've had the grass mowed. We have the trees trimmed. We've had the dead limbs removed. We're gonna be painting the door on the, the pump house. So we are doing our best to be, to be a good neighbor. And we do supply water to everyone. Everyone that lives on Hiley Road as well. Any other comments on the, on the water reservoir? So we have a couple other pieces of business before we retire downstairs to continue with our, with our budget workshop. The next being, we have a request from the Solarize program to place a banner. I think they're asking to place the banner on the front of the municipal building. Is that, is that municipal building?
That's why we are cross-drug nine blocks.
Well, it's been, yeah, it's, it's been removed from the, that proposal to put it cross-drug nine, it's been removed. I mean, actually, they're, they're calling it place in convenience, but it was mentioned the, the building.
On the building?
Do we know the dimensions of it? Did we ask for that last question?
We asked for the size, and he said it goes in front.
Okay.
I don't think he asked you that.
So I know Gentry was planning to come back on April fifth. Let's ask him to, to give us the size of it and see how it would potentially fit. And also, they have a request to set a table at the farmer's market. And typically, we grant that kind of request, but we just need the date, because they just said a, a Sunday. So we need, you know, April fifth, if he can come back with that, with that request, we should be in good shape. The next, we have a request from the Ness County Agricultural Society to, they're requesting permission to bring twelve antique race cars onto the property for the May sixth to eighth Hudson River Valley Antique Auto Association Car Show and Swap Meet. They're trying to coordinate so the twelve cars come in at the same time. And the specific nature of the request is to, they're requesting permission to enter on the Parson Street entrance as opposed to the, to the main gate. And this would be because of the normal traffic pattern of the, the attendees to the event coming through the main gate. They, they're gonna be in the, which building is it, do you know? E. What's that called?
E, I believe.
What's it called? Isn't that a name? Building? Anyway, it's gonna be a building, but it's over on the Parson Street side, and that's why, why they wanna come in there as opposed to come through the main gate. So I would like to make a motion to grant permission for this request.
I second it.
Any discussion?
My only question is, I don't know, I don't know why. I mean, this is, they're, they just wanna deliver at any one time on a public road.
So there's a weight limit on Parson Street of, I believe, three tons? And these would be, it, it's basically a pickup truck with a trailer with a classic race car in it. So combined, it would be over three tons. So they're asking for the exception. The only other exception is for the delivery of livestock on platt during the fair, I believe, because of the concerns of the heat. So this would be, you know, a one-time exception for that.
So it's specifically due to the weight limit?
That's why they're requesting the exception, yes.
And does that apply to other events? Do they do the same thing for other events, if they're bringing in rides or whatever?
No, those all come through the main gate.
They don't use the Parson Street.
Right.
So this is the only time where they would use that because of controlling traffic?
Right.
And it's because of the weight. I did not understand the...
Yeah, this would be an exception to the, to the road. To the weight limit. So we'd be essentially waiving the, the weight limit for this one period of time. And they're gonna exit out the main gate. And they're gonna be, as it explains here, they're gonna be rallying somewhere, maybe, I forget what he said, but maybe at, you know, the Stop and Shop parking lot, and then the ten, is it ten, twelve, twelve vehicles will be entering, you know, at the same time. So it should be minimal disruption to the, to the neighborhood.
So if we grant this, it's a one-time grant?
It's a one-time.
It's not, it's not like a blanket thing that allows for anything?
Exactly. It's for May seventh, that morning, to allow the entrance of these twelve pickup trucks carrying the classic autos, classic race cars to enter.
No, I understand. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
So on that note, this is a program that's sponsored by the Rhinebeck Historical Society. So these cars are gonna be, I believe, fifties are, you know, antique race cars that some of which, I believe, were raised here at the fairgrounds in the, in the heyday of, of auto racing in, in the village of Rhinebeck. So I wanna go to check them out.
Me too.
Anything else? So we will be retiring to the, downstairs for the, for our budget workshop. You're all invited to come.